Call the board meeting to order and start the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll start with floor five.
Mary Jo Rasmussenasky. Mary Jo Radcliffe.
Here.
Patty Jacobson.
Here.
Laurel Meek. Amy Huffman.
Here.
Mayhama Thundercloud.
Here.
Scott Burton.
Here.
Has the meeting been noticed?
Yes.
And is there anybody who would like to make a follow-up comment? Okay. Then I'd like to move that focus on purpose be moved to take place after 6.3. Is there a second?
Second.
Very good. All right, we'll start with the board commendation then.
You have to do the all in favor.
Oh, I'm sorry, all in favor.
Yes, yes.
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 Very good.
Last minute, was told that she's facilitating the meeting, so we're all good.
Tell it all to me afterwards.
It's all good. Okay, so the board commendation?
Yes.
Mary, can you come join us, please? So, the beginning of the school year, I asked all of the district staff if they had people that they wanted to recognize for exceptional services to our district. And first of all, the response was fantastic because we have so many great people in our community. However, Paul Rickin felt so incredibly strong and passionate about the work that you do. And he was very clear, usually they just give me some comments and I say them, he wrote a paragraph and wanted to make sure that you heard all of the words. So, I will paraphrase later, but what Paul said was, "Mary has worked with us on the Paul's History Project since 2002. She's an invaluable resource for both me and our project interns with 16 projects up to this point. She introduces the students to the resources that are available in the history room and also works with me nearly every summer developing the various projects. She's an outstanding promoter of history in our community. The Jackson County History Room is an amazing resource and she has developed a tradition of excellence with her work there." And so, thank you so very, very much for all that you've done for our students and for Mr. Rickin. I know that he relies heavily on you. And the words that other students have said, "Boy, that lady, you ask her anything and if she doesn't know the answer, she knows exactly where to find it." And they said, "She gets excited about helping you to find it yourself." And so, thank you so very much. We have a certificate?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Where did it go? There we are. We have a certificate for you. And Amy, if you come, we'd love to get a picture for it. Speaking of around the block, here it is. Picture for our district social media. All right. Perfect. Thank you so very much.
I just have to add that today is my 24th anniversary of the history room.
Well, how fantastic is that?
That special means the change.
Happy anniversary. Here's a sweater. Here's a sweater. Really appreciate it. And now you can have a happy anniversary cookie and go off with your number. Thank you so much for taking the time to come. We really appreciate it.
Okay, next, we will take a quick look at gifts and grants.
Sure, so today we are celebrating one gift and one grant. First of all, the grant is $200 and Sarah Halverson happens to be here. That was given by the Wisconsin Beef Council to provide, I'm assuming beef, for her foods classes. And so, again, as I mentioned last week or last month with Mr. Markert, Sarah just does a great job being really aggressive at seeking out new opportunities for her kids and to help find funding sources so that her kids can benefit from them. So, we're very appreciative of that and congratulations to Sarah. Secondly, a gift of $900 has been given to Jen Doll, her elementary art teacher. And the gift is technically from Wells Fargo Your Cause LLC, but if you ask Jen, that's her very, very, very dear friend who every year makes a donation to the elementary art program. And she has funded some amazing projects in the past. And so, this year, she's donated $900 for Jen to bring in a guest artist. And that has been done the last couple of years and it's such a neat experience because they're able to bring in the guest artist for the day or two days and almost every time a kid in the building gets the opportunity to interact with them at some level. If you recall, last year, you guys even got to make your pinch pots with the visiting artist. So, we're lucky to have Jen on staff and she says, and I'm lucky to have friends who've done well in the business world that can find our poor teachers, is what she says. So, that's another fantastic gift and grant we'd like the board to recognize. Make a motion to accept the gift and grant.
Sir.
All in favor?
Yes.
Very good. All right, did you want to mention that letter?
Sure, while we're talking community engagement, I did want to just share with you, one of the roles that we serve as a partner in the community is when industries and businesses are trying to attract new families to our community, they oftentimes will say, "Boy, they're really interested in what the schools are looking like and we'd like to talk a little bit about the school." And Dr. Kellen, as you can imagine, being a small rural community, they sometimes really struggle to get doctors interested in coming to move here. And he was so appreciative, on one of the days we had admin meeting, he had contacted Mr. Rue and asked if Mr. Rue could possibly go out and tour with the wife of a doctor that they were hoarding. And so, Dr. Kellen responded afterwards and I just wanted you to share this with all of you because it was really a compliment to our entire staff, specifically to Dave Rue, who said, "A big thank you for allowing Dave Rue to leave your meeting a bit early Monday morning to make time for a visiting physician candidate. Dave did an awesome job of answering questions and showing what a wonderful opportunity children and students have in our school district. Even the fact that he was allowed to visit with our doctor and leave the meeting to do so showed the importance of parents in the school district's mind." I can tell you that some serious questions our doctor had got answered in a very positive way and her concerns were resolved. And he said, "Oh, it was great to work with you and your staff. Thanks." And so, I just think that that is a nice way to show an additional partnership with local businesses who are working hard to get quality people to move into our community. And so, I thought it was thoughtful of him to write that card and obviously, all of our principals are called on to do that at different times, but Dave obviously did a great job because Dr. Kellen followed up with, "He signed up." So, that's good news. So, just wanted to share that as well.
All right, thank you. So, next, we have Renee Davis from the American Heart Association.
Thank you so much. I'm actually here to thank your district, but especially...
You guys can all come up and sit here.
Yeah, I have something for you.
She likes bringing stuff.
I know. You guys have been doing Jump Roper Hearts since the very beginning. I used to work with Kitty Young and then Mary kind of took over and Andy. And I just want to thank you in person because you've done so much for the Heart Association, the kids. I mean, I'm running into kids now that graduated from school and they remember doing it. It's something they'll take with them forever. And it's a lot of work and these two put a lot into it. Andy has dressed up like a duck.
Those were not an American Heart Association days, just for the...
Just for fun, ordinary, everyday. And last year, you guys are always in my top 10 for schools as far as money raised. And you're not my biggest school by any means, so it's not, so it's even more, in fact, last year?
Don't say it.
Okay, they were almost number one. I like, I eat it, easy bits.
$200.
Yeah.
The grand total was staggering, wasn't it?
Twenty-seven thousand, I think. Yeah, like $27,000. I am going to leave a few sheets because I don't want to, I know you guys have a lot to do, but just on some of the stuff, you know, you wonder, wow, that's a lot of money. Where does that go? It does so much. You might not see it, it's tangible, but CPR, you know, if somebody, one of you collapses someday, you just hope that somebody is there that has had CPR training, right? And now, your high school, thanks to, I may be here again because the hospital has donated CPR training with your high school. But anyway, I will leave some information for you. I wanted to give you guys this plaque and I'm, they're so fun to work with too. I don't know which one of you wants to...
Mary's a little bit of stuff. I know where the hospital, you get all the...
They have a lot of T-shirts that say like Jump Roper Hearts and they're usually kind of kid T-shirts, but these, I thought were appropriate because it says, "Work hard, play hard," which is exactly what they do. They work hard, but they have a lot of fun while they're doing it. So, we'll have a couple shirts for them. So, thank you guys for being so supportive.
Thanks for me.
Can I take you guys' picture by the little wall up there?
Sure.
I'll be right back in. Absolutely, thanks for asking.
Do you collect $27,000 in there or is that because you have them on? So, the next item on the agenda is a school resource officer, but I will wait for Shelley because she has information to share on that.
So, we've had a lot of conversation over the last couple of months about the school resource officer and our, oh, we were actually just going to focus on purpose.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's right, I just looked at Megan, I'm like, wait.
Yep, that's right. So, yeah, Focus on Purpose, the Business Ed and Family Consumer Science, going to share with us.
So, if you're going to stand in that middle world, you have to talk into this so that it goes on the tape, otherwise there's microphones there and back there, right? He's talking.
We would like to introduce ourselves.
I'm Carol Norman and I teach family consumer science at the middle school.
And I'm Sarah Halverson and I teach family consumer science at the high school.
I'm Mary Burns and I teach business ed at the high school and middle school.
I'm Egan Finch, I teach business at the high school and at Red Creek Elementary.
And I'm Ryan Johnson, I teach business education at the high school.
So, we would like, so we would just like to share with you guys the classes that are also, we call them transcripted classes. So, when they take the class at the high school, they also get dual credits at the college or the university level. And so, I will let the business department talk on their...
We have several classes that are articulated with Western Technical College. The software applications for business is our most popular, primarily a freshman course. In that course, students learn Word, Excel, and PowerPoint. Mr. Johnson this year is teaching the first half, I'm teaching the second half. And then, we have MOS, Microsoft Office Specialist, 1 and 2, so where students are able to test for the MOS certification, so whether it's in Word or PowerPoint or Access or Excel. And then, we have, are articulated with accounting as well. So, those are the courses that students can earn credit for at Western Technical College as well as at the high school.
And then, these would be the three classes that are offered in the family consumer ed area at the high school. And these have all been done within the past year. So, lots of work that we've been doing with kind of aligning our courses and our standards to meet WTC's standards as well. So, the infant toddler class and the child development class used to be one class, we've split them apart now so they can earn three credits for each of those. And then, there is the foods 2 class that they can earn three credits for. And that will just be beginning in second semester. So, that work was just done this past summer.
Can you explain just a little bit what that process is like to get that class articulated? Because it's a pretty grueling, I mean, it's pretty time-consuming.
Yes, we have to meet with WTC instructors and then go through their whole, the process of aligning our standards. They look at our curriculum and it's kind of a back and forth process, you know, until they are okay with what we're teaching and then they approve it. And then, you have to go to updated, kind of update course with them once a year.
And WTC, the UW system, has recently increased the expectations for teachers in that regard. It used to be once that original alignment was done, you were good for a while. Now, they've added that additional requirement. And I think we've shared with the board at other times that our CTE area has been extremely aggressive in this, that we offer more transcripted credits than many, many, many schools that are much larger than us as well. And so, that's a huge credit to the staff that's willing to put in that extra work and do that, so we are appreciative.
So, our department, which is kind of put together, we're pretty proud of our work in the offerings that we do. And once in a while, we get kids that are like, "I didn't realize this class was so much work." But I guess when you're also getting those three college credits for it, that's part of the reason.
These are the industry certifications that kids can earn in our courses. So, we have Microsoft, Word, Excel, Access, and PowerPoint, which Egan mentioned. Last year, we received $5,241 for all of the students that were seniors last year who earned the certification. It's a pretty intensive process for the kids and it's kind of fun to watch them take the test because the test is never the same and it's kind of like suspenseful. So, they do all this work and it's all, what do you call it, project-based, so they have to perform the skill. So, it's not multiple choice or two-faults like that. They're actually performing these skills in these software programs. And then, the program closes and this little blue bar goes across the screen and then it says, "Either you pass or you failed." And to see them pass, after like, sometimes it takes them several attempts, they just get so excited. So, that's always kind of fun to watch. And you know, one of the things I have my kids do before, in the, at the first part of my classes, is they go out and they look for jobs that require these skills and they're finding that these are skills that are in demand in the workplace. So, it kind of puts it into real, real-life situation, like if I get this certification, it opens up some job opportunities for me. And I'll let you talk about shake and baby.
Okay, we put shake and baby training on there. It is required by law that middle school and high school students are trained in shake and baby syndrome. So, both Sarah and I offer that at the high school and the middle school, which is very valuable. It seems like a really easy thing not to do, but a lot of students need to be trained on that, how to handle a baby properly when they're frustrated.
Every year, we receive an amount of funding from the federal government, Carl Perkins Funding. It usually ranges between $7,000 and $8,000 and it's split between, we divide it between all four CTE areas, so A and Tech Ed and then our two areas. And that helps promote some of the special things that we do. And so, sometimes things that our normal, our normal budget just won't allow funding for. And then, of course, we have lots of other funding sources where we go out and Sarah can speak a little bit about this, about how we've gone out and applied for grants from other places.
So, as you can tell, a lot of our areas require some extra funding because a lot of hands-on type of things that we do. So, sometimes there's not always that extra funding. Carl Perkins does help, but there are just some other funding sources. We've received in the last four years, the lowest toolbox for education, which helped buy some new sewing machines and some new lab, I guess, facility type of things. The $750 to help buy new washer and dryers from WXOW. And then, obviously, some of those different, smaller ones for specific food type of things in our areas, my area specifically.
And as I mentioned before, while she says it's necessary for us to find other funding sources, understand that's still a choice that she's making to go out and seek those and to write those grants. And so, again, we're very appreciative that she's willing to spend that time and provide those additional opportunities for kids.
I run a class called Retail Management and so, if I ever smell like popcorn, you'll know why. And if the popcorn's too salty, I'm the girl to talk to. And so, with that course, our students help manage several tournaments throughout the season, as well as every volleyball game, every home basketball game, boys and girls, and the wrestling events. And that money is always, all of the profit, every single dime of that profit goes right back to the kids that work the events. And we try to do, the night of the game, we try to make an announcement saying, "Hey, tonight's concession is being run by the dance team," or FBLA, or whoever it might be. And the kids are great about, you know, opening and closing and, and just running a business like it, like it should be. We run into problems, we have to maintain equipment, you know, we have to deal with inventory. And so, not only is it hands-on and a really good experience for our students to learn all of those skills, but then the money, every single dime goes back to our kids. And that's what makes me especially happy. And so, and it's across the board, it's whoever's willing to work gets to be there. So, I'm really, really proud of that.
And I have the tech team. We have a group of sometimes 10 to 16 kids per semester that, I think I'm going on my third or fourth year with a tech team. They're in the building because we don't have full-time tech support and there's just no way that, like, I could take care of all the tech issues in the building by myself. So, we have a team of kids that we train to go out and problem-solve software, hardware issues for teachers. It saves the district tech department time and money, you know, like coming over and taking care of stuff. The kids learn some hands-on, real-life experience. It's a lot of problem-solving and they're pretty proud of themselves for being able to help a teacher.
All right, and I do the work-based learning, I'm the career coordinator as well at Blackwater Falls. So, I work primarily with two different programs, the youth apprenticeship program and then just the Wisconsin Employability Skills Program. So, with the YA program, it's more industry-based skills. So, for example, last year, I had a student who got his youth apprenticeship in plumbing. And so, he was actually going and working for Halverson Plumbing every day and he was showing that he, that he had the skills needed to be a plumber, as well as the work skills that you would need in any industry. So, that's the YA program and then when they end that, they get a certification and a lot of times get offered a full-time job after high school. And then, the second program is the Wisconsin Employability Skills Program. It's not necessarily aligned to specific industry skills, but more so skills that are needed in any career, any job. So, your soft skills, showing up on time, communicating, so on and so forth. And again, kids like the program, they're learning real-world skills, most of the time they're getting paid. And then, they're also getting some high school credit as well. They do some online coursework for me. Yeah, that's kind of the program.
And I'll talk about the job shadow that the eighth graders do. A couple years ago, the students were able to line up their own job shadow and our success rate was not that great. A lot of the kids would go with their parents or they would just opt to get a zero. So, Brian Stember and I last year decided that all kids in eighth grade needed to go on a job shadow. So, we have them do an assessment on career cruising, all the eighth graders do that, to find out what their interested careers would be. And then, they also meet with Ashley Weibel, our school counselor, and they talk with her about what the results were of this assessment to see if it really matches. Because every once in a while, like last year, a student got a truck driver and they were not interested in going on a job shadow with a truck driver. So, she always talks to the students about their results and then we place them. So, there was a lot of help from Mrs. Brugan also on that. Last year, we had 57 businesses that the kids went to and this is our first year that we had done it this way, so we felt very successful on that. When the students go on their job shadow, they ask questions of the person they're shadowing. And then, when they get back, they write a thank you through their literacy arts class and they follow up with a presentation to their focus group. So, we had a 97% success rate last year and it was successful, just not in numbers. But the kids were so excited about their job shadow. The student that I picked up, he got in the backseat of my car and he said, "They offered me a job." And he was, he was serious. They really did offer him a job. When he got older, they said, "You come back," because they were impressed by him. So, it was a very positive experience though, one we're looking forward to doing this year again. So, how do they give to all those job shadows? Oh, that's a good question. The school district bust them to and fro to the business. They worked on a route to pick up, drop off, pick up, drop off. It was kind of a cycle around town that they worked out. It was good. And there were a lot of people that helped, so the bus, the bus transportation people and Stephanie and all the businesses, obviously, there was a lot of coordination to do with that. And so, Brian Stember, I want to make sure I say his name too, because he was a big part of that and he's a Tech Ed teacher. And then, last May, we had the Career Fair and Stephanie and the Seven Rivers Alliance and the Chamber of Commerce really put it together. And Mr. Stember, our job was to get an activity for them, the kids. That was the first time eighth graders ever got to go to the Career Fair in our district in our building. They usually went to O'Clare to the Career Fair, so it was nice to have it in our own building. But Mr. Stember and I came up with a little scavenger hunt. It had the different career clusters on it and the kids had to go around and find the different career clusters. There were a lot of businesses there. It was full, the whole gymnasium was full. And there also was secondary education there and the military was there. So, they got to go around and they got to ask questions of the vendors there. And they were excited, the kids were excited. They really had some good conversations, they were asking good questions and it was just a really positive experience. And this year, I think it's at the high school and then the year after that, we'll come back to the middle school again. So, it was a good experience.
And then, a few other things that we offer, real-world learning experiences in our department would be TAs that offer, we have kids come in and work with us when they are seniors to help us. And I just have to say, I had a student a few years ago say, "I didn't realize how busy you were during the day until I became your TA." They just, they're helping, do lots of stuff. They're helping set up labs or take things down, you know, organizing things. And there's a lot to keep organized in our areas. I have two rooms that I work between and it's just a lot to try to keep it all organized all the time. And then, we also do a lot of obviously simulated real-world experiences in our coursework and that's, I think what we pride ourselves on is that hands-on experiences in our coursework. And then, a lot of community service things that we do. And again, we're going to talk a little bit here about some of our CTE and how the CTSO groups also work with that. And so, a lot of that, that is intertwined.
So, these are numbers and courses that we have among us. So, the high school business has 12 courses and we figured out that we serve 220 students this year. Middle school business, one course, but that's through all three grade levels, right Carol? All three grade levels?
Yeah, I have all students, yeah.
135 students per year. High school phase, six courses, 130 students. And then, middle school phase, three courses, 366 students.
So, if you look at that, the high school, that's almost half of the high school students who are choosing, because by then it's an elective, almost half the high school students are choosing to take a business class. That's great.
We do have a lot of community partnerships. We have Tiger Credit Union up at the high school that's present Tuesdays and Thursdays. We have also partnered with CCU who has sponsored a team to attend the Finance and Investment Challenge Bowl. So, Mr. Plaza and his Tiger Investment Club students will be attending this year, as well as my accounting and my law students. And then, CCU is always wonderful about helping with Reality Day. So, Ms. Christensen is part of that with her, with her course and then, yeah, with her course. And then, we have, we always have mock interviews that CCU is a part of. Do you want to speak about Courtesy Corp?
Sure.
The Courtesy Corporation really is just McDonald's, I believe it's 30-some, maybe 40-some McDonald's that they own in midwestern Wisconsin, part of Minnesota and Iowa. And they do a lot with us.
They were here like two months ago as our Focus on Purpose. Yeah, you submitted that.
Yeah, I submitted that. Because they just do a lot with us and a lot of people don't understand what the Courtesy Corporation is when you say it that way, but they do a wonderful job. We have done field trips for my classes, they come and help with mock interviews. They believe in all those soft skills that we're working on in our departments and encouraging that. They come in and speak to my courses, they're always willing to send volunteers to help judge competitive events. They're just really a good partnership and they do that with a lot of schools that tap into those resources. Pine View and Atrium, is it? Up on top of the hill now, it's changed names. We do some partnerships with those guys in our, some of our life skills and development classes. Ashley Furniture, I know my class, they do a lot with my class, my housing class, and I know they come in and help with mock interviews. The childcare centers in town, we do quite a bit with those. But just like Carol said, lots of different community partnerships, like just, they do a wonderful job supporting us in a lot of the things that we do with work and job shadows and such.
All right, so I am the advisor of FBLA, which is Future Business Leaders of America. And we try to focus on a few things throughout the year, one of which is competition. We compete in regionals in the, it's the first Saturday of February. We've had some success the last couple of years. This is my fourth year now with the district, so in the first three years, we've gained in the number of kids we've sent on to state the last three years. Last year, we had an entire van full, so you know, it kind of went from, I think, two or three kids the first year up to a van full. Last two years, we've had a student go to nationals, so that was pretty awesome for me personally, even in my years in another district. It was my first student to go to nationals, so that was awesome. We try to help out with some community service, so we're partnering with FCCLA and doing some help with that empty bowls event that I'm sure Mrs. Halverson's going to talk more about here shortly. And we're, that's one of the focuses that I'm trying to get the kids to develop some kind of, other than just empty bowls, some kind of community service event that we can help out with. And then, we're just learning leadership skills, building our, our business skills. The events that I talked about earlier, there's like 75 different events that kids can choose from, between computer skills, business skills, coding, web design, all kinds of stuff that they can choose from. So, just another way to enhance their learning in the, in the content.
I'm the middle school FCCLA advisor and right now, I have 25 seventh and eighth grade students that are in FCCLA. It's been a really good year for us because we get to meet during our intervention time, tiger time. And so, a lot of the kids, 17 of my 25 are doing a And so a lot of the kids, 17 of my 25, are doing a star event. They're working on them during the class period, which is a great benefit, because normally they would have to do it outside of school. So they're getting help with their projects, and they are working hard. Just example, from last week, I had a student in eighth grader, he wants to be a teacher. He went to Forest Street and read a book to the kids. It's a star event that he's participating in. So that stands for Students Taking Action With Recognition. And probably, you've probably heard of that. But he will compete in February, on February 1st. And then two other students went to the food bank, and they interviewed them to see what they could, come back to the school and ask the school to have the kids bring in to collect. So they're working on those communication skills with adults. But there's a lot of exciting things going on at the middle school. In the fall, we went to UW-Stout. We went to a leadership conference. And I had, I think, 18 students went to that. And at that conference, they learn leadership skills, and then they can bring it back to the club. So we're doing a lot at the middle school, and it's really exciting. It's exciting to be their advisor. It's a lot of fun.
And I'm the high school FCCLA advisor. And I will just kind of echo their sentiments as well. It's fun to watch these kids do above and beyond projects outside of the school day. And I know our Lunch and Learn also helps meet the needs of those students who, it's hard to meet and have outside meetings. Well, we have a lot of students that are working or in sports, and so that really has been helpful. And they come and eat with me and stay with me that whole hour. So that parley protein better be good. But I think that we, we do a pretty good job here in Black River with our CTSO groups and some of the things that they are gaining, their leadership skills that they're gaining in these organizations. And currently, I have 34 members at the high school that are doing projects and enrolled. So we'll see if they all continue on to regionals. I guess where we're going. I guess where we are going, we are doing some updates in our textbooks and curriculum areas, which we talked a little bit about, some of the alignment with the transcribed classes. Continuing alignment with WTC, looking for future courses to align. And I know that's not just our department, but the other areas, in the CTE areas as well. Just some facility updates, especially, like in the high school, we talk about storage, handicap accessible labs, better ventilation, just lack of space for growth. And then just updating equipment. I think those two things go hand in hand. And I know the district does a nice job of having that kind of revolving spreadsheet of looking at what needs to be updated as well. And so I think Carol's doing some updating, or looking at doing some updating of things in her specific area. And then I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Finch, because she has done a nice job with the National Board Certification.
Well, the National Board Certification is a national certification that where in your content area, you say, "Hey, I think I'm crazy enough to think I've got this down." And so Mary and I embarked upon that last year. We actually had a cohort out of CISA 4 that was formed, and so teachers from our region. And then we had a mentor that kind of guided us through the process. And so both Mary and I are taking two years to complete the process. Our scores come out December 1st. So we're excited about that. But both of us...
Are you pressing that blue bar?
The blue bar. Will it be green? Will it be red? And so it has been an absolutely wonderful experience for us to reflect upon our teaching. There are four components. It's a costly experience. It's a lot of hours and a lot of time. But I think it's important to know, we have a lot of teachers in the district that want to be better at what they do. And it's not just us. But we have a lot of teachers that even after all of the years that we have taught, are really curious about being better. And so I think that speaks volumes, not just for us, but for all of the teachers who are in every Saturday and every Sunday and every evening, and throwing in frozen pizzas rather than having a home-cooked meal for their kids. So it's been a really great process, regardless of how those results come out. It's been a really good process.
This is just a group of FBLA members that went to state last year, from state.
These are pictures, we fun, right? So here's our FCCLA members at state last year.
On the left are my eighth grade students. When they go to the Pine View Center, they're visiting with the elderly there. And then my FCCLA group brought back, brought back one of the UW-Stout activities, and that's on the right-hand side. They're doing that activity.
And yes, we have to talk about our Empty Bowls project that we started last year. We kind of look at this as our big collaborative event, not just with all the CTE departments, but we've also collaborated with art and our special ed department as well. And a few weeks ago, we were nominated, and we received the 2018 Standing Up For Rural Wisconsin Schools Award with our Empty Bowls project. So Tony Evers wasn't there that day, because it was a few days before election, and he was campaigning. But the two students that went with us were kind of bummed about that, that he didn't give us the award, but...
They didn't think Mike Thompson would get standing?
Well, he was a, he was a lovely guy, but they just, they just kind of...
He didn't care.
Yeah. But this has kind of become, I guess, a really nice way to kind of display the students' work. And it was super neat to see last year, all the different groups come together. And not only, you know, obviously, my group does all the serving and making, making of the food and serving the food, but all the different departments come together and want to showcase what they make. All this stuff is student-made. And I hope more people come out this year and, you know, maybe want to purchase some stuff from the students as well. So we just keep pushing this project.
Last year took some people by surprise. Myself and Jill, when I got there and saw how many incredible projects there were for sale. I'm not sure everybody came with that shopping mentality when they came. They looked at it as the food piece. And so my, I did my radio spot on the Empty Bowls. And I generally encourage them to come with Christmas shopping in mind, because, oh my gosh, was there some really, really neat stuff. And the middle school commons was packed. At some point, you might need to expand out of there a little bit, but it's really, really a fun night.
Yeah, we like to kind of have it that night, because it also pairs up with parents who are coming to see their middle schooler sing, and can also get a meal that night as well. And Carol's group of the middle school kids, I think, like working with the high school kids. It just, it really turned out to be a cool thing. So we're hoping to continue this and hopefully grow it every year. And last year, we donated $1,900. So we're trying to exceed that this year and be well over $2,000, so.
And what night is that, December?
Monday, the 3rd, starting at 5:00 in the middle school commons. And this is our award. So.
So do you have any questions for them? So the certificates and the college credits, are those fees that the students have to pay, or are those absorbed by the school?
They were absorbed by the school.
So first of all, for the certificate credits, there are no fees. There, once the teacher has done that work, there is no additional fee for the student to get those credits when they leave. They just request a transcript from the high school, as well as a transcript from WTC. So nobody is paying for those. The certifications, that's part of, the one sign said $5,000 whatever, whatever dollars. That was lump sum for all of the kids, not a per student. But we have, since the department has started to get more aggressive about getting those certifications, when we do get that reimbursement, it goes back to the department to help fund some of those. Some of the, I'm thinking of the auto shop for sure, for students to take that test. The actual bunch of gross motors and gross motors sponsored that student taking that test. And so it would be nice if the teachers didn't have to take that additional step to go fundraise for their kids to take that test. And so hopefully, as the number grows, the funds would be there to help fund that in the future, so.
And how many students are taking advantage of those transcribed credits or, and getting certificates? Do you have any idea?
We have the certificate numbers up there, but do we have transcribed?
Well, maybe I missed one. As part of the redefining ready report card, they're going to get it at the end of the year. We will definitely know how many students earn how many credits while they were still in high school. So that will be something that Sky was going to start tracking for us.
And for those students to take those MOS tests, those MOS tests usually run close to $200.
Right.
But because we buy them, you know, we buy a package of them, knowing that oftentimes students might have to take the test more than once, they just have to wait 24 hours. So when a student takes the test and fails, we can take a look at the areas where they struggle. It kind of breaks it down. And then we know that they have to go back and kind of review those areas. And sometimes, in all fairness, it's just test anxiety, because they have to do, they have to pay attention and read clearly. And they can't raise their hand and ask for help, because it's a, it's a student test. It has to be given, you know, in a certain manner where they're working independently. And that, that can be a little stressful, that, that testing situation for some students.
And the first year, we were able to fund the test with grant money. And then, well, no, the first year was free. The state offered it for free. Second year, we got grant money. Third year, we were back to, what were you paying?
We use money.
We use some of this.
School storm, right?
Yeah, we use some school storm.
We also use some of this. We're seeing that. It's good.
Eventually, it'll be self-funding, right? I mean, as the numbers continue to grow.
And kids are really excited about passing tests, so they can take more tests. They're really on board about that.
It is kind of fun, though, because you're like their ally in the process, versus the person, you know, like, you're there to help them. And so they look at it in a whole different light. It's kind of fun to watch them, the way they are with the test.
Any other questions? We're extremely proud of the work that these guys do. They really, they affect so many kids throughout our system, and just a great, great, great work. So thanks so much for coming tonight as well. Thank you.
All right. Now that brings us to 6.4, the School Resource Officer position.
So as the board knows, we've had quite a bit of conversation with both Jackson County Sheriff's Department and the Black River Falls City Police over the course of several, several, several months on this topic. And I've recently had conversation with both Chief Bakken and Sheriff Waldeira. And Kyle Nosbish from the county has continued to serve in the role of School Resource Officer this school year. So he did the last part of last spring, and addition, just started off the year already in that role this fall. And in my last conversation with Chief Bakken from the city, she had requested a full-time detective position into her budget from the city, and was hoping that whatever the district would fund from that full-time detective position would be the SRO. And that position was not granted in her city budget. And so she said at that time, if we were interested, at one point, we had talked about $20,000 investment. She said that if we were interested in making that $20,000 investment, she would take one of her current officers and assign them to be in the schools more often than they currently are. But to be honest, after talking with both her and Sheriff Waldeira and Kyle Nosbish, the officer who, the deputy who is currently in that role, I really think it's in our best interest to contract with Jackson County Sheriff's Department to continue that role. And I've talked to both Normals Mendoza and Alma Center, Humboldt, Maryland School District, and that is both of their intentions as well, is to fund a portion of that position. And so the sheriff's department is asking to, their initial proposal was a four-year contract, and neither Jill or I are comfortable entering into a four-year agreement, because that's spanning multiple, multiple budget years, and just feels like a lot. And so we are still working on the contract language, but I am seeking action from the board to commit $15,970 is the dollar amount for a third of the School Resource Officer funding from this current school year. And so right now, I'm asking for that approval for this year, knowing that once we get an arrangement for the future, we would bring that back for future years. But I know that the sheriff's department is also trying to guarantee their funding. They work on January 1 to December 31st, and so they're just coming up on next year's budget. And so one of their years spans two of our years, you know, if you figure it out that way. And so that $15,000 would be for the 2019 calendar year, which would be part of our 18, 19 school year and our 19, 20 school year.
How many days will Kyle be at our building then?
So what he currently does is he works half-days in different districts. And so he usually spends four to five half-days in each district. I will say that his, he drives through here far more often, and when there have been incidents at the buildings, he's been pretty quick to get here. And, and as I've said, every single time we have this conversation, when we had that bomb threat at the middle school, both the city and the county, exceptional partnerships, and both they're, the drop-up have, and willing to be helpful in any way. We had that school safety forum last week, Tuesday. Both the agencies were there, very much wanting to be helpful in help with the presenting, and all just work together so incredibly well, that we're adequate where I don't feel like it's divisive anymore to just select one over the other one. So that brought the recommendation.
There, I have, can you tell me the differences in what the city was offering and what the county?
Sure. So what the city was hoping to do is that they could post a full-time position, and they would capture the bulk of that position in detective work, and we would fund $20,000 of that position. And that position would just be a School Resource Officer in the school district of Black River Falls. When it became apparent that she was not going to be able to add a detective, she had said that she could take one of her, she could hire a part-time officer and use that $20,000 to do that. Or she could pay a portion of one of the full-time officer salaries and then have to hire a part-time. In the end, one of her biggest rationale for the idea of a School Resource Officer was the continuity. If you recall, when we had that special meeting, she continued to talk heavily about the relationship building that needs to happen. And in our conversation, she agreed that when you start hiring a part-time officer, when there are so many needs for officers in many communities, there would likely be more turnover in a part-time position. And so the idea of continuity would be lost in some regard. And so she has also said, and we have, the buildings have seen evidence of it, she's definitely increased the presence of even the city police officers in the buildings, just stopping in randomly, just walk through, go out on the playground, or go into the cafeteria and eat lunch, or... So honestly, through all of these conversations, both the county and the city have really made it a priority to funding, no funding, because we haven't given anybody an eye, and Kyle's been there so far this year. So they've both made it a real increased priority to just be visible in the schools more often.
So if it came from the city, though, there was a difference in which ordinance is the county and the city addressed?
Yep. And so that will still exist. And so if there is an incident in which Kyle needs to write a ticket, or a violation, or anything like that, he would still need to call a city officer. And if it was a city officer, and they needed to write a ticket or an ordinance, they would have to call the county. So really, regardless of which decision we made, there would need to be that cooperation between both of them, the one difference. And the city has stepped up at Gepphart, I think, very seldom. The city has made it up there. But the Gepphart School is technically not in the city's jurisdiction at all, whereas all of our buildings are certainly within the county's jurisdiction.
So this is a one-year?
This is a one-year agreement that I'm asking for at this time.
Yep. Any other questions? Would somebody like to make a motion then? I'm sorry.
I was just going to talk. Today, we had contacted Deputy Nosbish about something, and he was scheduled for Alma Center. And so we had just contacted him, and he switched his schedule. So he's very flexible to do that. So he spent the first half year and then went there. So his schedule is pretty flexible that way.
So each of the buildings are in the middle of doing their school violence drills, and they call Kyle. And Jill, actually, are both on-site while they're doing those drills. And so it's nice to have his expertise there as well.
Okay. Anything else? Would somebody like to make a motion regarding School Resource Officer?
I'd make a motion that we contract with the county for a School Resource Officer.
Would you like us to specify that among the one years that, that's necessary? Is there a second?
No second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Closed?
Aye.
Good. Motion is passed. Okay. Thank you. All right. That leads us to employment recommendations.
And so as noted, none of the resignations or hires need your formal approval. I just shared them for your information. So there's been some turnover in our support staff, as well as we had a bus driver resign and have hired a full-time bus driver, so.
All right. Student success, Spring Youth Options. And I apologize that I put "action needed" on there. That was my mistake.
So, the board used to have to approve youth options, what it was called youth options, but it is now called the early college credit program. And the reason I got that mixed up is because that formal policy is going to be adopted later this evening. And so, I was living between the both policy worlds, and so I apologize for that. What the statute says is the board must be notified, not that you must approve. So, I will just tell you, we have two students right now who are signed up to take a CNA course at WTC. And we have one student who's taking like a business management type of course at WTC for the second semester, and that is through ECCP, Early College Credit Program, not through youth options anymore. So, again, there's no action needed. My apologies. We'll get their new lingo down sooner rather than later.
Okay. Then, material adoptions.
All right. It was so convenient that half of the department that was on here was already here to talk tonight, but hopefully had a chance to look through this. We had some very old, to be blunt, resources in several of these classes. And the teachers were fantastic, and we're just using them and using them until they were falling apart. And so, to be honest, in a lot of these areas, through our transcription process, it made a lot of sense to update resources. The resources are pretty expensive from Western, and so, we are lucky in some of these courses that they were willing to work with us, and we didn't have to purchase the book that they actually use in class. So, for several of these, we're able to cover two courses with one textbook, which is fabulous. So, I don't know if you had any questions. I can just tell you a little bit about our process, although it was kind of in here as well. But I did meet with those teachers. We reviewed several different resources from different publishers, and then we did a fair amount of discussion with other partners, both Western Technical College. We also talked with DMS and the instructor there to make sure that we were aligning what we're doing with some things in the community as well. So, do you have any questions, Phil? They're so excited about the potential of these new resources.
All right. Any other questions? Does somebody like to make a motion?
I have, I have a question. The cost of that is part of our already designated?
Yes, so, material adoption is something that I pay for out of my budget. And so, I was not sure how long it would take, so we had so many partners and things to talk to. But after kind of going through that review process kind of last year and just year more, so it's all already accounted for in our budget.
Okay. The bulk of the curriculum and instruction budget is either professional development or curriculum resources or curriculum writing time for teachers. So, all of that is a lump sum each year that she then divides. And that's part of our, trying to get the adoption cycle, so that not, like, if the whole district decided they wanted math and ELA at the same year, there's no way we could possibly fund that. So, it's kind of a, and when you look at it in the grand picture of, for them, it is a lot of money, but in the grand picture of, you know, if you do a math adoption, you're talking, you know, 60 classrooms that you're getting ready, so.
Somebody would like to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the attempted book adoption presented.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
Then, student success committee report.
We met and we elected long-ago chairman, which you should be reporting on. We went over a professional development schedule. We looked at what all the teachers have been doing, and they've been very, very busy. Talked about that it looked like Forest Street needed maybe a little bit more time in the classroom before school because they had parent-teacher conferences from other buildings that substitute time. So, we talked about that. We looked at the department review plan, and then Stephanie updated on her curriculum. So, I think that's all we did.
Okay. All right. So, finance and facilities, monthly expenditures. Did anybody have any questions or concerns or anything to plonk in that? Okay. I move that we accept the monthly expenditures as presented?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Then, we have the Indian education policies and procedures.
So, as part of our Impact Aid application that we do each year, there is a requirement that our, they call it Indian policies and procedures, which I find interesting, because I never use the word Indian, except when I'm talking about this policy, to be honest, but it's the federal government. So, they, they require that the board review and adopt this policy on an annual basis. So, if you look at the bottom part under approved, every single year, we approve it, whether we make any revisions to it or not. And so, this is a policy that Laura Simonson and I worked with the parent advisory committee to just kind of gauge and make sure it still met our needs. And additionally, the government was quite, the regulations of Impact Aid were quite specific as to what needed to be included in the policy. And so, all of those items are in there as well. We're not recommending any changes since last year. We just needed, in the minutes, that the board has reviewed it and approved it. So, that will be to our Impact Aid application in January, and this can be included.
All right.
I move to approve the Indian education policy procedure. Second.
Great. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? All right. Motion passed. Next, we have the policy committee board report.
Okay, we have a lot of policies to go through. I'm just going to share, I had said that by the time you get to the second reading, it was going to be in pretty format, and then I wanted to make a change to this one before it even got that far. So, there is some red in here. When we were looking at the requirements for the safety grant, as well as board reporting, we thought it would just add clarity if we would put exactly how many of each needs to be done on an annual basis. And so, the red numbers are added, the red words have been added since last time. So, it just talks about how many have to happen and the fact that a school safety response or a school violence response drill can replace either your fire drill or your, one of your tornado drills. So, there, I just wanted to give the principals a little more clarity in how many needed to be done each time. So, that was the only change from last month. If you have any questions, Hannah?
Were there any other questions or concerns about any of the other policies as they were presented?
I didn't have any concerns, but I was just curious, and 424 were talked about students participating that are, are school choice. Do we, do we have any students that participate in our sports programs?
We have a student that was coming to the, that was doing music for a short time, but I don't think right now, I'm sorry?
We do again.
We do, okay, I'm sorry.
As of last week.
Okay.
We have two.
But no one does sport.
I don't have a student who participated in professional football, who is homeschooled.
Yeah.
But I just wondered if anybody did.
Yeah, we've had, we have, we have some.
Yeah. All right.
We have some that take courses, because they're allowed to take courses, and then we have some that are participating in some extra courses.
All right. Any other questions about any of those other policies? Do we have a motion to accept policies as presented?
I'll some move.
Second?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Yes.
All right. Next, meeting minutes. Do you want us to approve those together or separately?
You certainly can together unless anyone has any questions about them individually. You can pull them apart.
Great. I move to accept the meeting minutes as presented. Another second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
And admin reports.
I was just gonna share, if you recall when I shared with you the exceptional swing in open enrollment, we had talked about doing some kind of a staff celebration. I wanted to share with you that we were able to do that the last Friday of the quarter, and I had a really good time. I'm not sure everyone else did, but I had a really good time. I invited the whole staff up to the high school, and we had noisemakers and fun music, and there was cake, and I didn't tell them what it was for, but we were able to really celebrate the fact that we had such a dramatic swing in our open enrollment from 3.45 going out for everyone coming in to 2.05 for everyone coming in. And so, we talked about the fact that that left dollars for this current school year that were previously unaccounted for. And so, we shared with them our plan, as I shared with you guys, to do some professional development. And so, this Wednesday is when Solutions Tree is coming in for full-day professional development for all of our teachers. The support staff does not work that day. And then, we've been busy contracting all kinds of instructional coaches for a second semester, that each building will have some coaching available specific to the goals that were set in their continuous improvement planning. And so, they're really coming along nicely. And you've heard a lot about the participants in that math grant from the last couple of years, from UW River Falls and UW Eau Claire. Just today, we were able to meet with one of the two presenters from that math grant, and we're actually hiring her for the second half of the school year. She will be in district and working with our staff exclusively. So, we're pretty excited about that. So, the other thing that we were able to celebrate is we also did our staff retention rate. You know, I continue to talk to you about the competitive nature of public education and how, once we get great people, we really have to work hard to keep them. For the first time in quite a while, our teaching staff retention rate was at 91%, and our support staff retention rate was 93%. And so, it was pretty exciting to get to share with them. So, kids are wanting to be here more, staff are wanting to stay here more. That student success is really inevitable, so we're really excited. Both of those are pretty significant measures of climate, and we all know that when people are in a positive climate, they, they're just able to be more successful. And so, that's exciting stuff for us. So, it was a fun day, I thought. I made them do a huge, huge high-five, like, literally, the entire staff had to go around and high-five. I, again, had fun. Not everybody enjoys it, but I was laughing, because you know how there's a lot of type A personalities when you get a whole district staff together? That little thing on the wall of Purell, there was a line behind that. Like, after all those high-fives, people like, they wanted to go wash off. So, that was fun. I also wanted to highlight the school safety forum, as you recall. After we had our latest incident at the middle school, there was a recommendation from a parent that just made a lot of good sense, that parents sometimes get so frustrated over safety incidents simply because they don't know what thought processes go into the decision-making. And so, our hope was that we were going to pass that auditorium with lots of people that were just dying to know. But unfortunately, when we're not in crisis mode, people are not willing to come. So, those 10 people that were there were super appreciative of our time and efforts, and they did get questions answered. And one of the ladies said, "Well, Julie, you have to raffle off a big screen TV to get people to come." And I said, "Well, that's a sad state of affairs, and that's where we have to go."
What if a raffle actually burned you money?
Right, 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 right. I didn't need a raffle license. No, I'm just kidding. So, anyway, there was not a lot of people there, which is disappointing. However, there were some high school kids that volunteered to come and do the child care. And again, those people who did come had their questions answered. It just was unfortunate that more people don't take advantage of those opportunities. And speaking of taking advantage of opportunities, another part of our continuous improvement planning is that we wanted to offer the opportunity for employee forums. And while the principals definitely do the bulk of the communication within the buildings, the four directors, with Jill and I and Tammy and Steph, don't necessarily have that forum opportunity very often for staff to come and just ask anything under the sun, or for us to be able to share district-wide messages. And so, we invited everyone to the first of three employee forums. And again, it was a small turnout, but the people that were there gave us some fantastic input. We shared with them the defensive strategy that the board has been implementing the last couple of years, just so that they recognize we are not committing to cutting our budget every year forevermore, even that there may be, you know, something else a possibility, and we just wanted them to know that. And we also talked about our community-wide needs assessment, and that is the vehicle we will use to update our strategic plan. And then, we used some of the grounding questions with them. Do you have the tools you need to do, the resources you need to do your work? Are there things that you see that need improvement? What can we do to be helpful? And we went through some of those questions, and we got some great feedback. And it's interesting, one of them was a safety concern with the site at Forest Street. And honestly, Jill and I both sat there, and the person who shared it has been in the district as long as I have, and I looked at Jill afterwards, I'm like, "Did you, is this the first time?" Me and the rest had ever heard that complaint before, and this teacher was at like saturation, frustration point, like, "I've been asking." And we're both like, "Who have you asked? Neither one of us knew anything about it." And so, honestly, the whole point of the forums is to give people the path to just ask any of those questions and open answers. The only other time during the year that we go out to the buildings intentionally for that kind of stuff is budget time, and then the conversation's almost tainted with budget stuff. And so, this really was just meant to be that open forum. So, it was definitely positive, and we definitely walked away with some things on a to-do list, which is really the point, I guess, is to find out those things that you don't know about. And so, we look forward to doing two more of those yet this school year. That was all that I had. I would leave it to the buildings. Tom's jumping up first, I see him.
Well, I went first last time.
Okay. Melon?
So, both Forest Street, as well as Red Creek, did an activity that Melon had came across this summer and said, "Hey, check this out, we're gonna do this at some point in the beginning of the year." Thought it was a great idea, so we kind of ran with it.
Yeah, so, we watched a video about a chain reaction of kindness and how oftentimes, when you do one nice thing for somebody, that person goes and does something kind for another person as well. And so, we use that to reinstate kindness throughout our school and teach our kids about kindness and how the opposite is true. So, you can also do a chain reaction of negativity, but it's more powerful and much more positive if we choose kindness instead. And so, when we choose kindness, it, you know, takes, like, the pledge shows out there, we take a stand against bullying, we stand together for kindness. So, very powerful, good message for our kids.
Did an activity with the duct tape, and when you grab duct tape, we use duct tape to fix everything. And so, if duct tape can't fix it, I don't know if we can. But we talked about how easy it is to rip duct tape by itself, you take it off and you can easily peel it apart. And so, if something is so strong that we rely on, but can tear apart so easily, we talked about, the students have that same concept. They feel like they're super strong, but there's always something that can tear them apart. But when you take a second piece of duct tape and stick it together, it is almost impossible to tear it apart. So, we showed them that, which really connected with the students of, if you're sticking together, it's much harder for somebody to tear them apart. And so, then, they came up and wrote their name on a piece of duct tape of their choice and stuck it to the pledge. And we actually had all of our students do it, so we did the front and the back, and then hung it on the corner of A and Forest Street. And so, then you could see both sides of the sign together. So, it ended up turning out super awesome. There, you get to see some of the kids watching the video in the bottom right corner, bottom left is going through, which is amazing when you, we bring in large groups of students, and they were waiting in line and taking turns and putting it on there. So, it was just phenomenal to see that. And we learned from Forest Street because they did it first, so.
Our, our poster is hanging up in our gym, so our kids see it every day.
Ours is in the hallway, just past the cafeteria. First, we had it outside, and I brought it inside, so I see it every day.
There's a lot outside.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Although, I had quite a number of items that our staff had sent me to share about. Just picked out two to share with you tonight. Author S.A. Bodine came to visit the middle school last week, and she, Ms. Bodine is the author of books that she has, The Compound and The Tomb, books that are read in sixth grade. And she came to the LJI, and all the sixth graders came in, and she spoke to them, very inspirational to those who are interested in reading and writing. And Mr. Downey kind of coordinated this, Mike Downey, and invited other staff from the building who were interested to come down and meet Ms. Bodine. So, I guess she lives locally and comes in free of charge to talk to the kids. And secondly, Mr. Stempfer from the tech ed, middle school tech ed department reports that he's about half-completed with the giant Jenga. Lots of, he's been, his manufacturing, students have been making, lots of orders have, throughout the district, have been placed. And the robotics team will be competing in the, I don't know what this stands for, I'm sorry, VEXIQ? VEXIQ Robotics Competition at Whitehall, and that's on January 26th. And the Skills USA will be competing in Holman on December 4th. So, I always need to see kids get involved in something outside of their regular classroom studies, and Mr. Stempfer just does a great job of putting in a lot of extra time and working with those kids to help them achieve success and reach out in the areas that they might not normally do in the regular classroom.
Thank you.
So, the high school, you may have heard that the PBIS team has been re-framed and renamed to the We Are BRF. And if you've driven by the high school since the beginning of the year, you saw, "We are unique, we are inspirational," et cetera, et cetera. And if you happen to follow me on Twitter, you've probably seen many more of those types of things. And so, that whole idea of "We are BRF, these are the things that we do, this is how we, how we act," so kind of like what the middle school or the elementary are doing, to instill positive characteristics and positive traits in students. We're doing it at the high school. Each month this year, the PBIS or the We Are BRF Committee has come up with a theme for the month, and then their activities and the things that we do with the students, we keep reminding them of that. This month in November, it's been selflessness. And one of the things that Vicki McColsky, our school social worker, came up with as an act of selflessness was to challenge all of the advising groups to put together a Thanksgiving dinner that would then be donated to people in the community. And so each of the advising groups got a list of items in a cardboard box. And today, Vicki, along with her intern who's with her Bailey, were putting together those boxes and they're going to be delivering them. So we have boxes with milk and turkeys and stuffing and pies and all that. It was interesting that a lot of the groups did it differently. Some of them had each kid bring in an item. Some of the kids brought in money and then the teacher went, went shopping with the money and so on. But it was neat to see how all the kids kind of got involved in that act of selflessness and helping out other people in the community. Aside from that, there are many, many things, as you know, happening in November and December. So just look at the calendar and go to Madenville and go to Pizza Hut and do all, and go to the concerts and all that and enjoy.
Thank you. All right. So that takes us to WESB. And we need to choose somebody to be in the delegate assembly as a representative. So that person will vote on policies and resolutions at the convention in January. So I know I've done it in the past, I think the home, what you have.
I did it last year.
Okay. Very well. So we can choose somebody maybe who hasn't done it before and who would like to, or it doesn't really matter.
First of all, who's all going to the convention? Because they had to be there to be the delegate, so.
Okay.
Okay. Fantastic. Fantastic. Now you're all eligible to be the delegates. Now that we know you'll be there.
There's one qualifier, right?
It's gotta be there, that's right.
And what day does that take place?
I believe that starts, isn't it like Tuesday, they do a little something, but there's the actual assembly on Wednesday because it's usually cutting it close for the evening function. So I think there's a little precursor event on Tuesday afternoon and then Wednesday is the longer event.